Yeah.
Beautiful.
There's.
We'll just skip.
It went right to summer. Yeah, maybe that's what we did.
It has a lot of, yep.
Welcome to the work session of Monday, May ninth. Zoom. Everybody had a chance to download the packet. skim through a couple hundred pages. Okay, Dustin, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah.
Updates you want to provide or leave us out?
Um, David here. Yeah, so, so, so really many updates from the packet are, um, there's a supplement in blue, um, that has the fire station, the principles and the fire station, the statement that council developed. Um, just kind of following up from the last meeting, also had discussed wanting to do, um, two, two work sessions, uh, one focusing on the map property and one focusing on the 140 Main Street. Uh, last workshop, work session focused on that. This one, um, we put together the packet focusing on 8140 and the concept of renovating the existing station. Um, we divided the packet into a couple of different sections, um, being, uh, the interlocal agreement and lease agreement, um, the draft designs that partners in architecture had worked on, uh, a few years ago. The inspections that we've had done on the property, which is the I O C A hazard survey, um, phase one, the specialist material survey, inspection. And then the cost estimates from a number of years ago that partners put together. Again, we invited, uh, Big Gas and Partners in Architecture and Chief Smith, um, to provide any, any updates or be able to answer a couple of questions. So like we did last time, I would open it up to also have a station. See where our council wants to deal with that.
Okay, and just, Josh, for the record, we, do we have any non-arranged participation on the screen? Is there anybody joining? I'm not sure if I can see everywhere. No one's on virtually. Anybody in the audience want to speak on a non-arranged phone? Okay. So at the record, there was no audience participation at the beginning. Where would we like to start? Want to hear from David a little bit?
This could be unnecessary segue in potentially. So on page 57 of the packet, this was in the, together by partners in architecture, partners in architecture, it lists programmatic functional slash environment at 8140 Main Street Fire Station. And that list two, four, says the 10 concerns or, you know, things that would need to be addressed, uh, related to the programmatic functionality, I think, of the space. So for example, the Bay Area does not have the width necessary to provide standard recommended clearances around the vehicles. Or the space, the area for turnout here or deployment is too small. Training, living, records, storage and fire inspector office all share a common area and are too small. I just am wondering how this list, um, or did this list help inform the proposed renovation design? And are all of these 10 items addressed in the renovation, the proposed renovation?
Sean, can you hold up a talk first?
Please, yeah, please, please go up and talk. That'd be great, David. Thank you.
Hi, David. Nice to be here with you. The, the questions, uh, or actually in general, the, uh, the assessment, what your programmatic issue, there's part of physical constraints as well as deficiencies too. And in general, all of the items that we identified as lacking were addressed in some form or another in a scheme. I recall right through 2014 up to 2016 somewhere, we did approximately 10 different schemes of things. And some of them had compromises on some of the identified items and some really pushed it to a real optimal situation on some of the other items. So there was a lot of compromises in all of the solutions, but for the most part, issues were addressed. If there's anything specifically I could say about the building is it was too small. That was really the big issue. The condition was pretty solid. There were a lot of wear and tear you would expect over the course of life of that building. But the structure was solid, uh, which also impacted the ability to meet some of the identified needs. Because of the physical structure constraint, size limitations. One of the solutions was a bump of the building out towards the park to give it one of the clearance requirements. Even with that, it didn't solve the, didn't meet all the guide. So an apparatus requires space around it in between it, in front of it, back it. As an example, five feet front, five feet back, and push it out to give you that five feet in the back or front. Seven feet in between apparatus wasn't sufficient based on base spacing as it was. So one of the solutions were take the two bays, so in between the two apparatus, you have appropriate sizes. Without really specifically pinpointing one of the issues that that was, I, I, I just kind of wrestle the idea that they were all addressed, but there were still compromises. But in the end, all the solutions had compromises, but the feasibility of what we were trying to do, I think we arrived at a conclusion that there was sufficient, um, acceptable solutions for all the needs that we had at the station.
And I'll just do one follow-up and then somebody else can chime in. So the concept, at least one, I think that was in the packet is this B31. It's on page 85 of the packet is what I'm looking at. And like 85 and 86, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So in one color, it seemed like it, in the lighter color, it's showing the existing space. And then a darker color, it seems like it's showing where the additions are, you know, to behind it and then to either side of it. To the side where right now the existing sheriff substation is, there's, you know, a large drop off there, you know, the slope down to that parking lot. And so I was just having a hard time visualizing what that would actually look like. Is there going to be a larger retaining wall or what? I don't know what that side of the building would look like from like elevation standpoint.
Just scroll over here shortly. And I believe that in that version underneath that, a block ground level or Main Street level, there was parking underneath that. Yes, there is parking. So, uh, this is page 53 of 80 that I'm looking at underneath there, you can see parking. Which was one of the big challenges too programmatically, parking and separation of video circulation was a big challenge. So Alpine Street was used as a parking source because we wanted to keep everything out of the apparatus bay on the street for two Main Streets clear as possible. So we had parking there, parking in the park side too.
Does that help?
A bit.
Doesn't.
Yeah.
Tried to ask the question a different way.
Right. I think so. Yeah, maybe I would just need to, and maybe somewhere else there's a different visualization. But how much of the retaining wall there have to be? Maybe there's some people with the site themselves and try to picture that. And then are they proposing using this parking here? Is that what you're saying about the parking? So the next page, that page?
So the parking on Alpine was one I was, would have to be created, would have to be created, right?
Right, yeah, exactly. There is a current apartment. We extended it up towards Main Street corner.
Okay.
And then essentially there'll be a bridge in this version that will go over to the mezzanine level of the sheriff.
This is where like we have utilities and the 5G tower is going in and out. Yeah.
Okay. It was, it was a lot like making a watch, putting this together, having a lot of pieces kind of fit within some arrangement without undoing something.
Okay, thank you.
So, David, how, you know, the last cost estimates that you did were done. Let's see the data.
Towards the end of the year, 2017.
Yeah.
And then we did, after that, we lived on this site. And then there was other sites, big store, but through the Main Street side, it was through the end of 2017. Actually, I think we did one last version of this site.
In.
When we were studying the map, we said, so that was in 2019, we did a, that's a version of an addition and trying to find this lease cost possibility and not extending existing bay towards the park. It has a bay or two bays actually to the bridge.
We, that's the version where we set the budget at two, what can we do for two lane? I came back, this is what can do for 3.5 lane.
You're exactly, you know, we're trying to hit a minimal target and satisfy our program, but it's still screwed up.
Mr. Solomon, there will be upset. And from the, David, you were on page 57, right?
Uh, yeah, there's two sets of numbers on there.
No, I'm sorry, the, the graphic.
Eighty-six and two thirty.
Well, I was different.
Several, I think. I was doing that, yeah, eighty-five.
So David reminded me, so we, we, we're four bays, we're four bays now, right?
Three bays.
But three bays in the bay.
Or the current station.
The four, four in the current, right?
Oh, yeah, four. We have the.
Right, okay. So, so this, the, the concept on page 85 of 230. Same one you're just looking at.
Yep.
So that changes the four bays to three, but lengthens them.
Correct.
Okay, are those like a bay and a half? Are they a bay and a half or what? Remind me what would fit in, in that.
We had one deep would fit, plus we'd have support work area behind it.
Okay.
Because we were lacking in that as well.
And, and what was the approximate depth of, of the addition off the back?
I'm, I will, my scale here, it's 18, 20.
Okay.
It's not a mission, but.
So from visually to 20, that's like one parking space deep off the back of the building. And all the way up is high.
It's high up.
And then the sheriff was off to the right or to the Alpine Street side.
Correct. Now, the two level station, mezzanine entry.
Okay, what was on the Alpine Street floor? What was on the, below that?
That was their sheriff's work area, their, kind of their office area.
That, that big area, that big room down there?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the two stories that we built upon was it extending the bay and then below on the outside it was open, right? Remembering? The, the first floor, the main floor, Main Street level, the bays were extended as you described a few minutes ago.
Right.
But below it, it was open. It was like an open up.
Under the addition.
Under the addition is open.
You kind of see it on page eight-six and thirty.
Right. Right. And then living, living area for the firefighters is off to the left where the, where the sheriff car to park now.
Correct.
And then around the hill and down. It's just all building down that hill.
Correct. There, I think it's a 3D vision that, I don't know if that's in the back of the call.
Yeah, it is.
The, the site was, I think it dropped like very far side, the low side is quite a bit. So we did some topographic cross-sectional studies just to get an idea of the way the bond would fit in the Main Street down on Park.
On page eighty-one of two thirty, you can see the 3D of the existing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the 3D of the existing, right?
I don't know where we're seeing the 3D of.
I think the, I think in studies, real 3D was one of the city and sheriff. That's the 3D kind of fly.
Okay.
Other than that, it's just the study. Essentially, it's, it's really kind of four, maybe five entry points. It's from Alpine. Main Street, it's from the access drive to the park. And then it's from the park side itself. So it's a lot of different approaches to the building, which helped with separating that circulation areas of open and conflict. So add a little bit of complexity to the users where they don't want to get into the building. Probably it was kind of easy in general. It's either off of Alpine or down the park.
What's the rationale going from four bays to three bays? What are all the current apparatus be able to fit in this configuration?
We were trying to gain clearance in between apparatus. So by going from four or three, we were able to have extra space on the two outside bays before that's a new walls. So we eliminated some of the constraints by doing.
It's cheaper to run a fire department with three trucks than four.
Which truck do we lose? Like which, what do we have there that we wouldn't have?
Well, I thought, I thought you, you could also park two smaller units back to back.
Can't. You just have to manage to move them up. Other than pull through, you have to move the first one to get the second one there.
And there was storage down below on the other side, on, on the other side for the lesser, lesser used, lesser used stuff.
There's, there's also the concept on page 107, 230, that shows, um, parking kind of off the side where, um, sheriff parks now.
So what, do we have three large trucks right now in our, in the station?
Yes.
They are.
Engine and two tankers or two engines and a tanker.
No, we have the two tankers and the engine.
The squad.
But, um, all of this, all of these concepts, there truly isn't enough base space to hold what we need whole. And that, that was part of the concept, the issue with all of these is that, yeah, we're getting a little bit of space in between trucks, but we're eliminating a couple of bays. So it just didn't quite fit the, the apparatus. And it does put some of them on base, which is a long way to wait. You can put a hole in it to create allocation with the right number of vehicles. Created some problem with all of these sides.
On my understanding, the plans on page eighty-five and eighty-six of two thirty or fifty-two and fifty-three of eighty. And my apologies for my weird voice. I'm still recovering from work now a little earlier this afternoon. Were based on an older needs assessment that placed the square footage around 12,000 square feet. Our recent one after this puts it about 18,000 square feet.
Correct.
And so this is 33% less.
Yeah, I don't know who did the one in sixteen. I came there in twenty fifteen. And when I looked at the one from twenty sixteen, I was like, where are we going with trucks?
The, the folks that let Dexter Towns build without sprinkled suppression inside the building.
The version, you're right, is in terms of the programming changes. So on the versions, first 10, the As, the Bs and the Cs were a smaller size. But when you get to the station, I think someone pointed out that around page 107, 230 and 108, this was a, a version with the reconcile program. So it has seven bays, but no, no double stacks. It's all, well, actually it doesn't, still, but on the ground level, it's five bays that are single apparatus. So it was a step closer to the new reconcile program.
So we should really only be looking at 107 in one way for the site.
That was. But when the asset agent is showing he could do for $2 million, that's the one that came back with. But again, it's, you know, it's compromised. There's a real problem. So if you add trucks, uh, tan bell shaped angle and try and get the truck out of that radius, out of the street.
Yeah, I, I got questions on that, but we'll.
Yeah. And then the bio stacking in the basement, which, you know, right now, uh, BPW uses that space as well and, and, or they're very evil spaces, to put it that way. So, you know, we're compromising and moving stuff around in order to build a top of the station. Those compromises, we challenge those, is that they still will need to be addressed. With this station, do a renovation, we'll still have to address those compromises. In my position, a long fit, not to want to put the city in that situation, we build a station, modify a station like this, and then turn around and see if it's done. And say, okay, how do we fix it? That just didn't seem like reasonable expense to tax.
I'm, I just, I want to go back to square footage question though. On page eighty-eight of two thirty. It says concept B3, fire and sheriff, 21,800 square feet. Page eighty-eight of two thirty. Which, then when you look at page eighty-five and eighty-six, that's concept B3.1. So isn't that? Wouldn't that be reflective of the page ahead of that, that's about 21,400 square feet?
It does.
Game three, three, there. I mean, so, I mean, it's not 12,000. It's, it's the full program.
The, the initial program was, was less than what we ended up. Whether it's 12,000 or 13, 14, as compared to 19 or so in the end. But this version definitely has more square feet. Maybe that that summary is not a program number. It's a summary of the planned version. So that's 21,800 isn't a program. That's the results of that scheme. So it had.
But there's a column on page eighty-four that says measured square footage from concept plans.
Right. So it's a concept measurement. It's not the program. So it's planned over program. That makes sense. This is an example. So we have four garage parking for staff. That's not a program element, but it's measured in a scheme on the page eighty-six of two thirty. There are spaces in that scheme that are line items in the program.
Like.
That's why they're all.
Awesome. Like vertical circulation spaces. It's counted in square footage, but it doesn't help the program space.
And it may not have been identified in this program. This is more what I'm saying is the program is the, here's what we need. And it's programmed according to standards and conversations. And then when you lay that program into a plan, uh, some circulation deficiencies are better than others in that square feet. So that's my best explanation of why I'm looking at page eighty-eight of two thirty, why the square footages vary so much.
So the almost eighteen power grid for the, for the new construction, the new footage that you put, is that based on program or concept?
Both. But the program drove it. So the program drove that concept. And because we were starting without fixed elements like the existing, the Main Street, we were able to be more efficient with circulation and adjacencies of spaces that needed to be next to each other. So just imagine this room next to the lobby, but there's something in between it. Somebody sent one of them to meet because they need to be next to each other. Uh, that's a wild example, but that happens when you're dealing with the existing, existing facilities, that something wind up bigger than they need to be because it's there. And I don't know how much of that accounts. There's pretty good swing in square footages here. I'm looking at this page on eighty-eight of two thirty.
So is there a number then that's what, that's what's on 107? Is there a number that lines up to this concept? I have it from a different printout probably from the binder, but it's not labeled. Do, does it match one of those or?
No, that was clear.
Okay.
Number of page 107 of two thirty?
Yeah, I was just wondering if that lined up, but it went because this was the page eighty-eight, that table that we were just looking at with the square footage in the process. And it says from 2016, but this plan from page one to seven is.
People don't know the plan. I think people are fair, but I'll shake, I don't think that know where the space is in base or listed as future spaces, but there's need to do that. So we're trying to keep out a number is you can see that the training room here, the testing or listed as future, uh, the courage concerned there is how far down the road is it constructed? And that was, that was to try to keep the price down. So they were basically white box spaces. We were concerned that next time, I just wonder the trade in the basement, and we get a call and we gotta run all the way upstairs to get the primary apparatus out of the building. That's delayed response times. So this, this concept is a valid attempt, but I just see the line is the way it's laid out.
So what was the, on page, on the, almost the last page of the packet?
What's the number?
Page two, or two twenty-nine of two thirty. Maybe it's two, two thirty and what, what's the difference between two twenty-nine and two, and two thirty? All of them nine, nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, one was a month prior, construction subtle.
Selective demolition is less on the second one.
So there were significant reductions in the saw costs, really kind of laying down the one item on the two thirty, two thirty, to just secure the technology versus the other soft costs that were included in one following that in October. I'm not exactly sure why. That might have been the conversation, meeting in September, saying, let's deal with soft costs another way.
The, the law one also does not include any construction contingencies or architect fees.
Yeah.
Which, so it's imaginary.
Oh, right, right. So.
Because those things happen.
What I was trying to get at, I asked though, is if the October 24th was the most recent, right? That would be the more recent date. Which is the, which is the higher one?
Yeah, it's probably the real last one to do.
Okay, that's, that's almost 18,000 square feet. According to, I mean, the gross building area hasn't changed to either one of those two, but the top of it is almost eighteen, right?
Be relative to that plan on 107, page 107 of two thirty.
This is one of them. Okay, that's what I asked.
We're gonna give a cost estimate for this today, if you have any idea.
Well, you know, but if I had to give a gas these are. You know, three and a half million, I'd say it's probably fifty percent more than that. So if I know. If not, no, in in general, this kind of construction is more expensive than new construction. Because in the marketplace, there are so many contractors, they do so much extra work. They pick the easy things to build or ignore things like this because they're complicated. So we're here with contractors who drive the reports, new builds, so that one point five more of them. And that's not for that reason. The escalation of construction markets.
If there's probably also it's costing here in fact, this extensive remodel may have to get through each thing project, which takes a lot of work. It's not finished, but probably a temporary fire station in the city if you want to keep protection here. Otherwise, the fire chief would have to do everything else to township buildings while this is going on. And so there's some stuff that's not going to do this, I believe.
I I think you're right. We have a ten percent call construction phase, but there's a movement that's just going to that. That gets a little tricky because you gotta buy stuff, not just deal with inconveniences. You have trailers of movement. It's not a big cost, but it's cost. And we're just trying to figure out why it's two twenty nine and two thirty. Why do we have those two? Maybe the first one in September was this is as close as we can get to the two and a half. But here's really what you should be looking at.
I understand the difference in the numbers. I think the answer is you add the soft costs in, because I think you did. Small confinement and a couple of things, but for the most part, I think there was the soft costs added in the or art to the other one.
Now, I I needed to be close to people's backs, so I suggested construction costs. That's, I remember doing that. And it might even said it to me, that's just construction.
So then in this drawing, I think, or one eight, one oh seven, I have this other printout. It looks like all is all the sheriffs parking then on Alpine. So that's where all their cars are. Okay. So I don't know. On any given day, don't they have on the vehicles? I don't know. There's at least three, four.
I think it was four was the number I was. At that time, and maybe it's different now.
Six.
There's transition that shift that we were we were dealing with that too. It's the squad car, the patrol car plus personal vehicles.
And is that like?
Problem with that lately. They have six or eight squad cars there and then your personal parking, they're parking in the space, you know, the spaces they park. They're parking the personal cars up there. So when we get a fire run up there, it was not enough.
Are they storing those extras squad cars there?
I can't tell you why.
Does anybody? There's so many. I've always kind of wondered.
I think on any given shift, there could be more than.
Right. So there's two. I don't know. I forgot how many it is to ours. I guess it just seems like we did twice as many cars.
Tell you what, we need one or three or four of them. We have frost situation. So they separate all nice.
Yeah.
And I don't know why they don't put them over in the C D R. They they also have office at the. Sound of fire station, then they've got a description of them there. So I I can't tell you their operations. I know it's getting very, very difficult.
But reasonably, I'm going to get eight additional spots on.
There's a decent amount of work that needs to be done, right? I mean, there's reasons we haven't the sidewalks there, right? Because it's there's existing infrastructure.
Retaining walls get expensive. We have to do engineering so they don't collapse. I'm going to ask some questions on the one oh seven, one oh eight. It's my understanding that in the main equipment bay, the current bay is going to be reduced from four to three. And the only way that we can get the the recommended clearance between apparatus is to not move the center bay. Is that correct?
Yes.
And because of the 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 structure, we can't just, we cannot expand the width of those. Openings, correct? Because it's it's reinforced concrete. It's heavy duty stuff.
You could do it reasonably. You could do it, but it would be, why not just go and finish?
And that may would still not be possible to open the cabs and do maintenance or check fluid levels within the base, right?
Not in this version, in the extended out back version, we made that indication, but in this one.
Blow the roof up?
In the back, yeah. But in this case.
Okay.
But the two new bays would be of that height to do that.
And my understanding is in order to buy adequate length or to provide space for aerial apparatus. We have to do this L configuration. Do you know of any other fire stations in the past twenty five years that have an L configuration where the exits are blocking each other?
One says Frank and Moose that has that, or maybe it's it's in that area, Frank and Moose. I think it's Frank. I can double check that.
Okay.
So they're not happening, but they're.
Yeah, because it's not common, because it's very.
Green Otown should also. Institute with their L exits opposite each other.
So they don't do cross traffic like this. So this would mean if the ladder truck or the engine in the extended bay broke down while exiting. There would be no other vehicles that could get out. Would that be a fair statement? And because the ladder truck has to be parked there, that's the absolute tightest, I recall from the site plan showing the turning radius. It has to have the wheel cranked the entire time. Is that fair? Almost fair?
I don't think so, but it's it's gonna be a maneuver. It's it was easily put in and taken out. We see the site plan hasn't shown.
But it's it's tighter than what you would ideally have.
Yes, and I'm looking at my. Now let's see. It's a it's a three point mark. It's not a a bit easy and easy and it's an easy out, but it's not easy.
Okay. And and because of the tight turning radiuses, that affects the length and longevity of the tires.
And.
What's and the pavement? What's the cost of tires for an apparatus in aerial apparatus one of these states? Yeah, three thousand. Okay. So this, it appears that there is not a decontamination area. Well, let me back up there. In order to place all the equipment that we currently have, we would have to have three apparatus bays. The existing one, the proposed one, and then stuff in the basement, correct?
Right. And I think she would say that maybe that's not sufficient. I.
Yeah, for what we put in there. A single base is. I gave you a quick concept of public vehicles, most likely in this building. And it came out of five fully based.
So ten spots.
Okay, we only have nine. Well, hey, that's eight. Because I'm I'm not counting the center bay of these. So it's eight.
But this plan with the budget didn't call for finishing the lower apparatus base. Is that a correct understanding?
White box home.
Okay, so not fully hooked hooked up with all the the things that need to be there. It does not appear that each of the three apparatus bays has decontamination support. Only the the existing one that gets remodeled, correct?
Yes.
So that would mean if someone is in one of the other bays with decontaminated stuff, they either have to walk through living areas. They'd have to go from hot zones through cold zones with contaminated materials, or they would have to walk outside.
The sequence that we envision that's working is you pull into the main apron. You exit decon into the decon room, not to your bay, and then over to the decon. You do that transition from outside directly to the decon.
It seems a bit complicated to dance.
It would. It's compromise. It's instead of three decons or two, maybe it would be better than one. This seemed to be a way to meet the program. I really know, but it would be the program. Like most fire, and maybe she elaborated, you return to the station after already done your gross decon. And then you take your hand tool, small equipment yourself into the decon cleanup. And then get your your gear into the cleaning room, and then you go into the bay or. The next space. So you'd be clean if you entered the apparatus.
Still have to wash the vehicles inside. That's a P P A requirement. We can't wash them upside, so it would be a little bit of trouble. That would need to be done in each bay, but I think with the getting there, getting to the limit is some of the redundant pieces of each bay. For instance, each bay would have climate events, whatever that.
So we had to buy three of those instead of one of those.
Correct. Each bay would have to have, I'll say, cleaning and janitorial support, mop mops, mops, booms, things like that. The way this is laid out, I can do the right, if you put one in the existing bay. And then you're going to take that stuff downstairs, and you're going to take it to the other bay that's repot because of the office area. Uh now, we're just not going to do that. So you're going to have to have janitor claws over water closet in each of the bays, both upstairs and downstairs. So you just tripled up in in what you need and some of that cost.
And and those aren't actually shown in here.
They're not shown.
At present.
The air air fires that are in each of the bays, not just the final vent, but there's also air cleaners in each of the bays. Uh you'll have to triple up on that in order to to do this concept. So that's stuff that, you know, that's not imagined here down the road. I was telling you what what this layout presents as challenges.
And there's.
In addition to, I mean, those are all valid points of what needs to be in the apparatus bay. And also the separator, the the water exits into a a separate system. It doesn't go into the same four drain system of the apparatus bay. It has to go into a separate system. So there is a separate one, but they can all be conjoined into that particular system. And then ventilation, I mean, you gotta have the final vent rails for each apparatus, whether it's in one room or three rooms. You're still going to have the rails. It's the system that supports the rail. So you're going to have a little bit of redundancy in systems, but they'll be smaller each. No doubt, it'll be a more costly way to do it, but it's not like you're doing it three times. You're still going to do it no matter one room or three rooms. It's just different size. It costs more.
It does not appear that there's anywhere to move equipment between bays except without going outside or through a ladder.
So.
Okay.
And you wouldn't, all the ways you could get there, you wouldn't want to go those ways. You'd want to go outside.
Which which either means folks are having to go outside or they're bringing potentially contaminated materials into living quarters.
Right.
And just so everyone understands, the cost for this, even with escalation, isn't apples to apples. Because this does not include finishing the third apparatus bay, which is necessary for equipment we have today. Finishing the fitness center or the training center. Is that a fair statement?
I'm going to retract on the apparatus bay itself. It would be equipped. It's the training rooms that would be white box home.
Okay.
But it's only generally stated that way here. So I'm assuming because I did that, it must be in the numbers. No, because it didn't specifically exclude it like I did in the other. So maybe that's right here, but there's a pretty good chunk of the lower level that's not finalized in that budget number.
All right. Um it's my understanding that the lower level of the building has had water penetration issues. It's an old foundation. It may be solid, but it likely wasn't waterproofed because they didn't do that when they built those. Does the construction cost include waterproofing, tiling of the foundation or not?
I'll say yes is the beginning. We did a really detailed assessment of all the issues in the building, and that was what we didn't identify. Actually, there was standing water were in there.
That's permanent.
Yeah, I can't remember the side. So it's it was a flow of some sort. It wasn't like an accident. It was planned in some way. But we did address those items in our initial budgeting. I don't know how much of it translated into this version. But I identified items were either part one, two, or three. All the ones were absolutely done. The other ones became, do we want to do either two or three instead of doing this or that? So I don't know precisely which priority one, twos, and threes were included, unless I go back and kind of revisit it.
And if someone is in, I'm going to stick in the basement there. If someone is in the fitness center and there's a call. It doesn't appear that there's any path for them to get upstairs without having to leave the building. Is that correct? Unless they can climb up the fire pole.
I thought we had a stair. We did. I don't know how easily it was illustrated in this level of detail, but I'll I'll start.
Looks like it's exterior. Looks like they go.
It's exterior. It's kind of a balcony access point because the mezzanine is up off Park Level. So from page one oh eight to two thirty, you can see a faint dash line. There's not an entry canopy, future passage to fitness. And then you can see that also on page one oh nine, some red dash line and obviously same jump area, which gets you back around to. On page one oh seven, that stairway that projects into the park. So you'd be either in a covered balcony, walkway into the stair into the station or. It's not well detailed, but just a lot of planning.
Okay.
There was a. A way to get it done. It was basically.
And so if it's exterior, though, it's going to have to be locked so yahoos don't just climb up, which we're sort of going to presume a fellow was doing fitness. Remembers to, yeah, we're we're going to have to enclose it, which is going to increase the cost.
There was a discussion. It was a pretty good. We related one of the other versions, the first ten. That we were looking at other community benefits to what might happen here at the station, like vertical circulation from the east street down to the park level. Restrooms to the park. And in this particular case, where I'm headed is for the fitness. What if it had access for other city employees, just not fire? So that idea lingered a little bit into this. Maybe there's another way instead of going right through the station into the fitness. There's another outside potential to get into the fitness. I think that's really what. Kind of drove that access point to easily got out of the way into that.
I'm going to jump up the bar. I'm I'm seeing no one else with questions, just to at least not interrupt things. The current apparatus bay has the pot drains, so the the little circle in the middle. My understanding includes is that those are divorce the poor functioning. And the preference is instead to have a long one underneath the apparatus, so it's easier to slope it. I guess for the chief, have you had problems with those? And how easy is it for us to put a different configuration drains in the current apparatus for?
The worst shape, we prefer the trench drains that you're talking about. That way, there's more sediment in the trench that we can clean out and not have to rely on. The center drains have a reservoir at the bottom, so it catches dirt and sand. But all the dirt and sand gets in there. Recently, we just had these things rolled weird out and actually replaced. Uh sewer line at the station because they were not working. They were not functioning. And D W is now working on getting some of the baskets repaired, so it's larger, so it doesn't get into those drains. But if that's your only reservoir to catch dirt and sand, it fills up pretty rapidly. Uh you know, we clean most type of things, but the trench drains can be pretty easily put in. If you don't have to change the center pot or center reservoir, you just got to cut out the drains and put it in. I guess probably one of your costs to to update the base to trench drains.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, it's relatively easy to do. It's cutting exercise and drain it. Easily just drain it. The other thing, we're doing a lot of communities that do have some dirt roast cells. We're putting up under body wash. So they're cleaning some of that off, really being proactive about getting the dirt and sand and all some stuff off.
I I've heard that from a number of stations, and they said that there's one thing they would like to have added. It's that underwash, under character wash.
And that certainly is going to be a part of this, are two new apparatus. And mostly do what you get from here on, what happens called the Tach for Tassium. And it's important that they're kept clean and forty to fifty percent, maybe sixty percent of roads around here are dirt roads. So we're already having issues with the Tach four and some of the inside pump stuff because that picks up in there. So. So having an underbody wash would be a great thing for us.
Yeah.
Do we have that already in the other stations?
We do not. No, it was not built in.
Actually, Weatherford Township Station has limitations on how much water they can use for cleaning.
Yeah, they're on a sub system, so it's a whole different pocket. Actually, two sub systems, the bay is on one sub system, the rest of the things on the other.
My understanding, talking with folks, is that because of how these spaces are put together. There are a lot of extra doors in the second, in the upper floor. To, to create separation from the, the office space to the day space, sleep space versus if you were doing it from scratch. All those extra doors are gonna add to scramble time or response time. Is that fair?
I see two doors maybe that you could eliminate. The rest really are, are not just separation for passage, but sound. So around the dorm area, there are two extra doors, let's say extra, but they're there with an intention. The doors must be PPE, possibly eliminate one of those, the one separating PPE from apparatus. So there's maybe two doors I would call questionable that you could, in the programming phase of the design development, take one out. So it's, it's not excessive in my. We're seeing more and more actually get planted into stations at sound sensitive areas. Then there's really three areas for that.
Just a short question in the same space. So is it intended that some, the sheriff and the, uh, the fire staff are sharing some of the spaces? Like the kitchen in the day room, or I mean, is that meant that they'll be separated or I don't? Is that what's happening on the left side? There was a duty officer and inspector. Those are sheriff?
The intention was that there would be some shared. In this version of that, there wasn't as much opportunity. And I'm thinking as a comparison to the plan we did at Maverick, where we really had a connector piece that was a shared element with training and restrooms and. The public lobby. So here, there are two access points, so that's double duty, right? And then same thing with separation, with the exception of the fitness center, and that, that would be an operational kind of thing.
Okay, so I just misread the names of those rooms. So sheriffs in this plan is completely over on the right hand side and the other side of the bay.
Yeah. Yeah, this one, it's, it's kind of exaggerated. Again, it's five points in which you get into the building, not including apparatus and people in these points that. That add a little complication to making things complex because there's almost so many ways to access the building. I, I think reasonably with the site building, it's, it's a reasonable plan if this is the only option you have. When we, we won that, it's a merit.
I'm gonna jump back and since the clock's ticking, kill some silence. My understanding is that the intended parking for the on duty and the fir, and the on call will be down in the park. Not in the apparatus half paper.
On the low side, up against the painting wall, there's on duty parking for firefighters.
And the on call?
Yeah, and then the park side.
Okay. So just so folks understand this, folks who are coming in with the lights on their truck to respond to an event. Have to drive down into the park and we need to have parking that's not being used by someone with kids in the playground or kayaking.
And run all the way upstairs. Then they would have to run all the way upstairs in order to kiss their foot.
One other concern I have with, when I spoke with folks after showing this is the. Number of apparatus bays would add scramble time because folks would have to spend extra time making sure they went to the right bay versus just going to the bay and getting in a truck.
That is correct. The guys put their trucks behind the most common truck going out to work. And if we get a call for instance right now, they'll put their stuff by here at this station. Uh, one guy puts his stuff by the engine, another guy puts his stuff on the squad, but if we get a call or we need tanker. They gotta go get their stuff out of one of those trucks and put it in the other truck. Uh, and it's all that.
So in that scenario, if they pre-stage their equipment in one bay, but they have to go to the other.
Correct.
There's gonna be all that extra time, either they're gonna have to go outside or through.
Absolutely. So if we look at that, that goes to existing two bays, if they have their equipment out there. We try to make a rule that no longer here comes into the living quarters, so for them to go from where the three trucks are forward to the other bay. They would end up needing to open up both bay doors, go into one bay, coming out, going into the other bay, put their stuff down, and then close both bay doors. Rather than carry their equipment through the building. It's a huge, huge known wrong for us to do that. Uh, I'm not saying it doesn't get done now because of where we're at. We have no choice. There's just absolutely no way not to do it. Uh, but certainly if we're gonna build a building and try to meet, you know, uh, health and safety and cancer standards that, that the fire services put together. This is something that we wouldn't want to do. I, I would say, Jake, it almost right here in front of the hall, if, if. We're even gonna try this at all, to some type of hall, we have to have two bays, but then that cuts off the watch area.
This plan is.
There would be maneuvers in this, this plan was kind of conceptual, so there's gonna be nuances like the point you raised. And can we solve some of those issues in the next level? Yeah, possibly so. And maybe to the point of the gear, five hours, there are two sets of gear. Could they have one safe in each?
We, we have what's called a backup set, so if the primary set gets dirty soil into the water, then they go pull one off from the rack and have it to use. But we don't give everybody two sets of gear.
Oh, okay.
No, I said a year's about five thousand dollars a piece, so just give it two sets. It's not a cost.
This, this plan, no conceptual, doesn't appear to include space for filling or storing of breathing apparatus. Am I missing?
Well, I don't know if it's identified, but I know within the bay area, we left a lot of space for that kind of, in the center of the existing bay.
Okay, I, it's been my understanding that the preferred practice is to have that in a separate room, so you don't get any diesel exhaust or other contaminant.
Yeah, and you wanna, you wanna contain it for cooling purposes because it's got some sensitive technical equipment that you don't wanna to. Overheat again, that kind of stuff after this broad brush concept, those nuances would get worked out. Or maybe it should have been on this, perhaps, but we're just really saying that there's a lot not on here that would eventually be on here if it went to that.
Well, but, but the, the sketch for the other space does show, which my understanding is at the same level detailed, they show the space. So when I look at this.
They're not similar.
Okay.
Yeah, the other one was worked over pretty well. The, the one for the average side. Yeah, that was worked over pretty well. This was done in real quick. Pull it together. I don't remember the time for you, but the other one we worked on for, I don't know, a half a year or so.
Figures, that's all. Yeah, absolutely. He was asked to show us what he could do for two million dollars and had to get it back to the phone for two. Obviously, he came back with three and a half, two and a half. This is where we were at, so we didn't have a lot of time to refine this. At that point, I think it was very clear that we weren't gonna be able to do anything in the existing station for too many hours. That was one of the actual.
So Frank and Moons hasn't L, but they hope they address opposite directions. Do we know anyone?
Green Oak, opposite exit.
Okay.
Frank and move, I think, I think they go together. Just a little bit of wine. I know that L are conflict, so.
Said green oak on the west side of twenty-three near Silver Lake where.
Yes, the main station right there.
Okay. Do we know anyone who has three apparatus bays?
Just three?
Well, sorry, three apparatus.
Gross Point has three. Uh, we just finished that one. I think Canton. I think maybe it has three. That's a new station.
Yeah, the difference between those departments is they are full-time departments. So they know where they're going, the bay door, truck, going out every single time.
So let me just jump in for a second here. So we're sitting here staring a lot at. Page one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh nine. My detailed question is, I assume the engine could go where the tanker is and one of the tankers could go where the engine is. On page one oh nine. I mean, there's no magic to that. Has to be a tanker and this has to be an engine, right? I mean, it's the common area where they always went.
The engines and tankers are easy to move around. Okay, so the engine is one that we want closer to where the guys are gonna be. That's one of the primary apparatus and then the squad as well. This shows the squad.
In the basement.
Basement. And that's just not perfect.
Right, the squad could be right in the middle between the, the two big things.
It could, but it takes away your distance between the trucks.
Only for the length of the fifteen foot of the, of the vehicle.
It's fifteen foot.
Fair enough. Well, so, 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 let me, let me just jump in just for a second. So. This, there's a, a lot talked about, that what can we do for two million? The, the, the example was meant to illustrate that there's another option to eight million. Whether it ends up at three and a half or four, or five point two. It's another option versus eight, or wherever the current number is for the current other one.
It won't be eight.
Yeah, it'll be higher. It's gonna be higher. I'll call it ten then. You tell me what number to put down. I'm trying not to embellish it, okay? So, you know, the, the, my, my whole aim for this has been to try and show. Our residents what the two options are in some type of preparative way. It may show out that one's far better than the other. Better is subjective to some, but it's likely more costly too. Okay, and, and I, you know, I, I'm still not sure that we aren't, shouldn't be looking at B three one that was back on page eighty-five versus this one. Okay, it might be that we can't get as many tankers, maybe we're one tanker shy at the main station. But that's still a conversation that could be had. I, I'm not convinced that the city station has to be the center of everything. Okay, I think it needs to be an important component of DAFD. But my, my, my goal in this has been to be able to say, okay, here's one option, and this is everything we can do with it. A brand new one, it should be, we ought to be able to, on a grid site, do the most with that. There's no question. You got the most flexibility. But if not, what's, what's an alternative? And what's the, what's the cost of that? What's the corresponding trade-offs, whatever they are? Whatever they would be. And I, I, I guess what I'm, what I would like to, is to have or suggest, I guess. I would like somebody to put those side by side. With some thought, so that we can see what option A is versus what option B is. Now call it pros and cons, call it. Benefits and things we can't do, or where, wherever, whatever, they could, they could be organized from a, how many trucks can we fit? You know, uh, one of the negatives is obviously we have to have an existing state, if we were to renovate the existing station. As everybody understands, you still have to provide fire service. So there's, there's some type of staging or phasing or wherever it has to go on. We like to point about everywhere else in the world and what's going on. Right here in Cile Township, our neighbors just went through this. They just did a renovation. Not one time did I read about lack of response or inability to do it. I don't know what it costs. We can ask those questions. I guess my, my point is I'd like to get a comparison. That's my suggestion. That's been my whole goal in all of this. I don't know how everybody else feels about that. That's my suggestion. We're over, we're over our one hour, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to stay on it for a little bit if you want. But it, it, to me, it doesn't make sense to go to the public with a question when you can't tell them what the other solution is. If the vote goes opposite, what do you think of it?
Well, if we're gonna do apples to apples, this has to be all built out. It can't be, we're not gonna build these spaces to make it look better. Every space that's in the new station has to be built out to the same finish level here. We have to account for the fact that if we're gonna try to keep, live in the fire station while we're doubling the size of it. That that's gonna double the cost of the trades, because electrician is gonna be there twice as long. We're, we're building the new stuff and then switch over. It can't just be if we're doing this and we shut it down. If we're gonna do that, we're gonna shut it down. We have to include the cost of either, we're gonna build a temporary fire station, or everyone's insurance is gonna go up for the year while we're doing it. Because our response times are gonna be significantly greater in the city.
That's a predict how it works.
That probably would not work that way.
I mean, I mean, if you're, you're embellishing allows. I agree with what you're saying. I would like to be as close to apples to apples as possible. What I, what I'm saying is, it might be that one station doesn't meet every objective. I think it's fair for us to point those out. And if the public finds out that those are important, they'll understand them.
I think anything we can do that makes sense.
But it's not clear right now.
That's right. Anything that we can do when we're trying to convey to the community what's going on, is we need to know. This plan, this plan, we can't just concentrate on eight things. If we're really gonna go out and talk about. Uh, an option, a choice, then I think that laying something out that has comparison to it, that we can compare makes sense to me.
I, I think we've tried to do a little bit of that over time and back and forth in the seven years that I've been here.
How did you do it? Do you have a forum?
I think it's still our discussions here is what, what this does, what that does. You guys have asked me to do different conceptual things. Uh, maybe it's not as neat and clean as someone like, okay, maybe not. I, I would stipulate to that, that it probably isn't. But my goal all along is trying to look at long-term solutions for you guys. You know, I'm only here another fifty-some days, right? And I still say that if you're looking at this and if you wanna go to and do this plan, you can do the compromises. It's okay to do that. But when you go to the public, make sure that you tell them is, here's the compromises we're going to do, but we are going to have to address them in the future.
I guess.
You can't just let.
Is that I can't tell them what the compromise they're making if I don't know pretty clearly what the plans are, and that's what I thought we would have.
And we've talked about some of those tonight.
Pretty definitive.
Put it in a more written form for you. But in the end, you gotta tell people, here are the compromises that we're pointing to have to be addressed in the future. Right? You, if you don't wanna address them today, that's fine. If, if you wanna build a, uh, put four million dollars in and do these things, but. You've got to turn right around when you're all done and say, hey, here's our new deficiencies. We fixed a lot. We used your money and fixed a lot. But now we've got some other things that we have to look at and start planning for another five, ten years, or whatever is acceptable to you. The risk, what's your risk tolerance of what you wanna build? That's gotta be acceptable to you. You gotta relay that to the public. If I'm gonna spend five million dollars now to do this renovation, just to turn around and spend another five, seven, eight million dollars in five years. To fix that, isn't it better to spend ten now? Get it done right. Bring us up to current code. Now, I will tell you that the codes changed. They talked last fall about some new codes coming. Right? The codes change all the time, but we can't build to an old standard. We can't build to old ideas. And say, okay, we're good for the next ten years. We're not. And I say that with all my heart, knowing that I'm not gonna be here for this project to see it through. But I would hate to see you just, you know, I, I don't wanna say waste, but inappropriately use the taxpayer's money and put the city in a worse situation five years from now. Because you didn't meet what needed to be done today.
Maybe to address some of the, when Serge here, for the clarity of apples to apples, the. Level of planning that went into the MAF site was clearly further along than this. Conceptually, this got the pieces together. To maybe identify the differences or the compromises and maybe itemize the cost relative to that compromise. Take this plan, spend a little time on managing it, to address some of the things that were brought tonight. And then do it in the same level of development as we did the other site, and then do a list. Here's what you don't have on this site. Here's what you were able to do on the MAF site. And in a real comparison way, we kind of did that. I'm gonna use, you know, as an example, we went through a major. Study of renovating, adding on to that original building. And got to a pretty fair level of completion, and they wanted a whole cost to do a new build. They were in the process of doing it, please. So we did that, got to a very comparable level of development. And then they were able to make a choice. They haven't put it out to the public yet, but the decision-making group has made a choice in their direction. Because they had sufficient information to make that choice. And I think we can do that relatively quick, I think. And I think we can do that relatively quick, I think. Take this to that next level, and I think we're gonna do a little bit to the MAF site too, just to kinda get it to the. Beyond a scope document, that's kinda what that document is, it's a scope document, I think we have to put a little development into it. Just for the budgeting purposes, because the scope will just leave some. Questions for cause, I think we can do that easy and then bring this up to the safety. If that would help, I'll come do that.
How long do you think that would take then?
Probably six days. If I had to go fast, forty-five.
Based upon what we've sort of. Iron now as well, we need it like forty-five. Right, I mean, I mean, to meet any timeline for voting, if we're gonna vote on something, we get with you by July one, right?
Since mid-August deadline for about.
Yeah, it's August sixteenth for that one, that life. It's we we would need a fire first meeting in July, whatever that is, maybe that, maybe that is sixty days of them, first meeting in July is the second one day of the month.
I can maybe just get it to work for that. And I I would say, the chief and I would have three or four meetings in that process, and I would ask the group to be available. At least twice to kind of do some checkmark in there, at least early in the process, so I don't get to the finish line and someone had questions that.
Yeah, well, do you have any idea what that might cost? And for a sixty-day effort to do that?
Less than one thousand dollars, something like that. Depends how many engineers that pull into the process. If you want, I'll think about it on the drive home, and I'll shoot us an email tomorrow. As I have in the past, Sean, I'll work on our my deal rates, and I think, you know, I ask that it's pretty.
I'm going to suggest that this council add a special item to our meeting coming up, so. I think I think we need to do that. I think, I think it it helps make the case. Much clearer for the public and for what we.
I I do have one last question, pardon me, about our director. This past year, we were asked about, it's about placing portable trailers for housing firefighters at this location. We were told that we couldn't do that because the use is a legally non-conforming use, and we're not allowed to expand legally non-conforming uses.
That's only just. Yes.
So.
Let me say that, was it a legally non-conforming use or legally non-conforming structure? The C P A doesn't afford to. And they can't do it for use. There, you don't allow them to do experiences, so you have to ask for the extension. Spark has trailers on for the new, Jordans, Justin, the name.
I think it would take so much explanation to do that, I think you put the trailer in and you're, they could pop up anyplace, because people will think that's a. It's legal to do it, so it's gonna take a certain amount of education, I think, if you choose to go that way.
That discussion of that trailer was to deal with an immediate need. If trying to get a safer order or habits never tend to be a permanent, semi-permanent, just hey, let's do this while we're still in the pocket.
Even even not a temporary reason, chief, I think people will see that, people that are informed and they'll grab ahold of that and then, good luck, Justin. Way to go, drive, hang in there, get ready.
And then you're gonna put up trailers in their own yards.
So, those trailers, how's it going?
Look, I I look, I think. Look, let's, let's not. If if it's okay, what I'd like, to give you a few months to think about is, I think that. You know, we have a six hundred thousand dollar surplus this year. Think we could spend twenty thousand dollars to take this to another level where these things are side by side with pros and cons or the. Sign development equals the concept, and the apples equal the apples, whatever you wanna, how do I say it? More information, we're gonna need that kinda document anyway, when we go to the public to explain what we're trying to accomplish and why to ask for money. So. That's just, that's my recommendation on where we should go for, if we're really trying to go towards asking a question. David, I thank you for your time, see you in the chief, you as well.
Thank you.
Why don't we take two minutes later, please, or rest your break, and then we'll come back and start our meeting.